Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Town of Beekman, Bleakman Planning Board Agenda this evening. If you will all stand, the emergency exits, we have them behind us, to your left, and then in the back of the building. If you will join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag of our country.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And a moment of silence for everyone who is suffering and our first responders and service personnel. Thank you. The minutes are not complete, they're quite extensive, and we need more time, so we're not going to approve those this evening. We'll push that to the next meeting. Tonight on the agenda, we have two public hearings. Is Kemco here? Kemco is not here, okay. So can I have, Dan, would you like to speak before I open that hearing?
Yes, sure. I think what I can tell you is that at the last meeting, the planning board authorized Cornerstone to perform wetland services associated with the project, Wetland Review Services. Shortly after that, the consultant from Cornerstone let us know that they had a conflict with Kemco, that they'd done work for Kemco, who is the applicant of the Boyd subdivision, and so they had to bow out. And I went ahead and tried to get three additional quotes from the other wetland consultants, and we were able to obtain two. One company that we reached out to didn't have any capacity to take it on, and we were able to get a quote from Tim Miller Associates. That was at a fair estimate, based on the scope, which I gave the same scope to everybody, was $2,700. And Ecological Analysis also gave a quote, again, same service, and that totaled up to $1,670. So between those two, and then the original SLR was a bidder long ago, before, with Cornerstone too, so that one, I know the applicant had some concerns with the value, so.
So we need to vote this evening on that?
Yeah, so I suspect what we would have to do is rescind the appointment of Cornerstone and then appoint one of these other two.
So do we have to do anything to retract what?
Yeah, I think the motion would rescind the appointment of Cornerstone and then appoint the whomever of those two that you choose.
So what, what are the pros and cons of each? Are we deciding which one this evening?
You know, I think they're both competent firms. You know, I wouldn't have sent out a request for them to put together a proposal if they weren't competent, and so, you know, I'm confident in the services of both of those companies, either of those companies, so.
It's good to hear.
Tim Miller is where, is he in Westchester?
Cold Spring area.
Right. I noticed huge variances in their cost structures. So from the other quotes that came in last month, should we decide based on price, so there's less expense for the applicant?
You know, they both gave some qualms for you to look at. If you've had a chance to look at them, I think they both, you know, they both have, both sides of the table type of work. They work for developers, they work for municipalities, so I think they're both well-qualified, so it's up to you, it's up to you guys to make a decision on who you'd like to have as your representative of the planning board.
We'll need a few minutes, let's.
Do you have their quotes in the package here, or is that?
Should bring them by general email.
I don't know if they got printed out, but I've got them here. They were emailed as well.
I have it in the email, but I just don't have.
I'll take a minute. What I can do is I'll skim read them for the board members, if you'd like.
If you want, you can go right off my computer.
Okay.
Right here.
All right, thank you.
Here's the, this is Ecological Analysis.
Ecological Analysis, and they're out of Newberg?
Yep, middle-town area, I guess.
Middle-town area, I'm sorry.
I need the mic.
And I'm gonna need another pair of glasses.
Want me to make it bigger?
No, it'll be all right. They're just, okay, scope of service, site visit, findings versus the standards, attend planning board meetings, number two meetings?
Two meetings.
Two meetings, to answer planning board members' concerns. The fee schedule is time and material based on the estimates below. Consultant onsite if requested, $750. Report of findings versus standards, $170. The meetings, the two meetings, $750 per planning board meeting. Attached standard fee schedule for review.
You know what, you're right. I actually tallied those three up.
Okay.
Seven fifty per planning board meeting, then it would be twenty-two fifty plus one-seventy, so twenty-four twenty.
Twenty-four twenty, okay.
So very comparable in terms of cost compared to the other.
So that's their proposal? Can you bring the other up?
This is their email here.
Okay. So this one is from Tim Miller Associates out of Cold Springs. Hi, Dan. Is that important, that part? No. So his initial review of the plans you sent over, the process will take about fifteen hours of time, $180 an hour, a fair estimate would be $2,700. All right. Doesn't talk in here about attending meetings and answering, oh, it does, includes two planning board meetings. Wetland consultant for Millbrook, Harrison, Westchester, number of other towns. And that's his proposal.
Yeah, so again, comparable price, both seem well-qualified.
What do the board members have to say about that? Any?
I have any experience with Tim Miller Associates, like, in a different capacity. They did work, I believe they did, like, historical archaeological resource plan for us.
Okay.
They do that work as well, yeah.
Yeah, they did a good, they did a good job, so I was satisfied with, you know, the work they did on, they did for Westchester County.
That's a good reference, yeah. Any other comments?
If Dan's comfortable with both firms, they're both given comparable services, I don't see why we're gonna spend more.
Are we obligated to, if they're comparable services, to look at the lesser cost?
Yeah, that's like a government requirement of bids. I don't know whether it applies at this level, whether you pick a reference or a price. The attorney?
Well, I mean, the applicant's gonna be paying for the freight on this one, so you're really using your best discretion for the applicant.
Typically, in government, with construction bids, it's the lowest qualified bidder, but with professional services, you're not necessarily tied to the low bidder.
That's correct.
But what Jason said is very true, if they're very comparable, if they're both providing a comparable proposal, then yeah, of course you go with the lower bidder.
So why don't we do that, then? If, you know, straw-ball quickly.
I think so.
Yeah? So that would make it the other applicant?
Ecological?
Ecological. Ecological Analysis is estimating their time and materials to be $2,420.
Okay. Do you want me to have the motion?
We have to first rescind the other one, or?
Would you like us to?
I guess you would have to, right? To, you know, methodically. I'll make a motion to rescind our initial, what did we do?
Award.
Our initial award to Cornerstone, whatever the name of that company is.
Cornerstone, yeah.
And that was just due to a conflict?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. As a result of a conflict, they've, they've kind of recused themselves, didn't they?
Yeah.
All right, I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So the second motion is to accept the proposal from Ecological Associates?
Ecological Analysis.
Ecological?
Yep.
Analysis. So moved? Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So that's, so the next thing to do is open the hearing?
You're gonna, you're going to ask the planning board secretary to notify Ecological Analysis that they were the winning bid on this one, and that they, we can share information concerning the contact information to the applicant, so that they can retain Ecological Analysis through the town.
All settled with that? Okay, all right. So any other items before we open the hearing? No? Motion to reconvene the hearing, that's been adjourned for a few years now?
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing with respect to Kemco Development Corp.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Anybody here like to approach the mic, name and address, and make a comment about the Kemco subdivision, two-lot subdivision of Pleasant Ridge Road? The history of this, very simply, is that looking to build two homes on a lot with what we feel is a water course that has come through. There's been some question about the initial scientist and firm that indicated the water course. The town is hiring its own professional agency to take another look at the applicant's expense, which will then allow us to make a decision one way or the other. That's the history of that application. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak about it?
Just assuming that the public hearing will stay open.
Can you get to the mic, Mr. Crane? I'm sorry for that.
It's okay.
Yeah. I understand. Just announce your name and address, please.
Bill Crane, 254 Gardner Hollow Road. Don't have anything to say, I just wanted to ask, I'm assuming that the public hearing remains open until, till, so like, have an opportunity once we hear the?
Yes, sir. That'll prevent the shot clock from starting, and it'll allow us to make a decision one way or the other, after we get the information we need.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comment. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak regarding this public hearing? No? All right, very good. So can I have a motion to, is there anything that the board would like to speak about while the hearing is open?
I'll make a motion to adjourn the public hearing until October?
Seventeenth. It's gonna be the next date.
Okay, very good.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
No abstentions and no nays. The next item, did we close the hearing? No.
We adjourned it.
Yes, okay. The next public hearing on the agenda is Bezuto Lot Line. Lot line adjustment, 110 Frog Hollow Road.
Good evening, Brian. Brian Hilton Brand. It's been a long time since sweeping back, so I wanted to come tonight to give an update on where we stand. Just received last week a response from the DEC regarding the wetlands permit. That application was submitted in October, so we just, and the memo we received was pretty intense, having to do with the water course crossing, we're proposing to access the rear farming parcel.
If you could give just a little histories?
So this project is a lot line readjustment, reshaping a narrow, we call it an access lot, reshaping that to create a building envelope down low, and then continuing a farm access road to the rear where the area is farmed currently for hay, but that required crossing a DEC-regulated water course, so we started that permitting process, but it's just proving to be too much of a strain to get through the DEC. So what we want to do moving forward is scale, not scale down, it's the same project, but remove the water, the crossing, the access road for now, allow us to create the lots for the new house down below, and then on a parallel track, kind of deal with the DEC down the road to formalize that farm access. So what the plan is, is that we'll get you a revised plan showing there's no more disturbances proposed in the wetland, in the hundred-foot adjacent area. That will allow us to get back, once we have your approval, back to the Health Department, who's ready to approve our septic system for the house, and really just let us make some progress for that, for that building.
For the sake of the hearing, if you could just identify the location.
Quiz.
Yeah, the address.
Is it 110 Frog Hollow?
Yes.
It's at the end, basically, the top Frog Hollow. I'm joined with the owner.
What, are you playing gotcha with this guy?
I didn't need to do that.
He's testing you, I'll make sure you.
I know, I gave it at the end.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
So, yeah, it's really just.
It's been a while.
Yes.
So at this, Dan, anything?
I guess the only thing was, you know, if he's gonna continue to do the farming in the back, or the haying in the back, I mean, they still have an access to back there for now, right? So that's something that doesn't prevent the haying operation that's going on back there from still happening, so, while they figure out, you know, a new crossing and a better way in the future, but.
So, and remind me about the subdivision, that parcel back there was gonna be a separate parcel, but now it's gonna be connected to, it's not gonna be a separate parcel anymore?
There were three, right?
There were three.
Sliver in the back?
Yes.
And then a rail trail crossing?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so that was, there, there was a discrepancy with tax map numbers, so that was straightened out, so at the end of the day, there'll be two, two lots, essentially one's borrowing area from another to allow for a larger building.
You were bringing the sliver into the lot?
Yes.
Yeah, that was adjacent to it, right?
Yeah, the filed map that created the parcels in the first place, that was intended to be an access easement on the map, but the county filed it as a parcel, so there's technically right now, there's to be tax parcels, at the end of this process, there'd be two. So it's just, it's kind of getting rid of this unbuildable access strip, incorporating a little more area into the lot where there's currently a mobile home that will be removed as part of the application, and they're gonna build a house there.
And remind me, the wetland issue?
It's, the water course is a DEC stream, and we're proposing a culvert crossing over it.
Where the rail trail is, right?
No, this is down below. This site, we'd have the house site, and it would slope down into a little belly, and that's where the water course is. We cross that and then come uphill into the field, and then hit the rail trail.
So are you planning on building anything within 100 feet of that water course?
No, nothing.
Oh, that's good.
No disturbances.
All right, yeah. I was at a conference last week, and the new, you're familiar.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Wait, they're not getting easier?
No, definitely not. So, okay, what's the next order of business?
Well.
Open the hearing?
It sounds like.
All right.
Yeah, just procedurally, one of the reasons why this hearing has been, continued to be open is because we have, as part of section 155-52 of our code, Wetland Water Course Protection Ordinance, so if the crossing was proposed, the DEC certainly has regulatory authority, but we also had regulatory authority as well, and part of that process is having a public hearing on the 155-52 portion of that project. So this public hearing is specific to the subdivision component, and we are waiting to do this, get the same with the water resource permit, the 155-52. So take that component out of it, and we will have just the subdivision hearing left at this point, then.
He's had to recite that code about a million times in the past three years. Million?
I'd say.
I'd like to make, make a motion to open the public hearing.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Anyone from the public like to, Mr. Crane, please?
Bill Crane, 254 Gardner Hollow Road. Shouldn't, I would like to see what the DEC says before, what the overall situation is before the board goes forward. They have a problem with it, we've heard. What's the nature of the problem, and to go forward without that information seems kind of premature. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment, Mr. Crane. Appreciate it. Would you like to address that question, Brian?
Sure, I mean, it wasn't that they have a problem with it, it's just that the DEC regulations are strict, where they try to avoid disturbances in their wetlands, in their water courses, they have sizing requirements for how big a structure needs to be, they had an issue with having a pipe crossing, even though it's part of their manual, they wanted a, basically, an open-bottom, pre-cast structure, which, you know, in our opinion, was an overkill for what the intended use is. So we do have a conference call scheduled for this Monday with the DEC, but as far as this application's going, if we're not disturbing within the adjacent area, then DEC is not involved.
Right. So you're removing that event from that consideration, from your proposal at this point?
Yes.
Right, okay. Did that answer your question, Mr. Crane? So he's eliminating that crossing from the plan, and just addressing the subdivision piece right now?
Right.
So he's abandoning the crossing?
Yes, sir. If I, yeah, he's abandoning the crossing.
For now?
Until it's addressed by the DEC.
I still say it's putting the cart before the horse for the board to go forward, if the DEC is gonna turn it down for some, if it's only for now. Dealing with the hypothetical, not knowing what the DEC is gonna do.
Understood.
They could, if it's, if he wants to build the crossing, then the whole thing will...
I don't mind, let's have a conversation.
It's a want, it's not a need, if you will.
From what I understand, Mr. Crane, is that having that crossing is not gonna affect the subdivision?
Right.
It's getting access to that field, and whether they do that or not will not affect the initial subdivision. And the DEC has no jurisdiction over the subdivision, it's just the water area, the wetlands, that at this point, they don't wanna infringe upon.
Okay.
If I understand it correctly.
Yes.
Right? It's a good understanding.
They wanted to revisit that part of their application, they would have to come back before this board.
Right.
And amend that application.
I don't know if you heard that, Mr. Crane. So, you did, okay. All right. And what actions are you looking for us to take this evening?
Is there anybody else who wants to speak?
Yeah, is there? Anyone else who would like to speak about this application? Thanks, Rob.
Okay, I'll make a motion to adjourn the public hearing to the October 17th, did you say?
Yes.
Meeting?
Do you want them to submit the new plan without showing the crossing? Is that the purpose of adjourning, or?
Is that what you would like, Rob?
Just asking.
I mean, I, if they're gonna change our, if they're gonna change our application, I'd like them to come back and show us the change in our application. I don't know how that affects the public hearing.
Well, we'd adjourn it, wouldn't we? Yeah, we're not gonna close it at this point.
Well, it would give, to what you're saying, it would give the public an opportunity to view the revised plan?
Right.
And comment on it, so, yeah.
So my motion still stands?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night. Next on the agenda for discussion is Savannah Estates, Town of Beekman, 6.3 acres.
Were they here and anyone else?
They're here, yeah. This is on the corner of Beekman and Greenhaven.
Yeah?
Thank you.
Just a little refresh here, where we are, have the applicant, LTH Property Holding, they're doing a five-lot subdivision, one of 6.8 parcel. Since we were last in front of the board, we have met with the fire department and discussed the project, and covered their drainage concerns, and I know that they submitted a letter to you saying that we got with them and that they're satisfied. We also did a submission to CHPO, and we received their response.
If I may ask, it was an open-ended letter, they were satisfied with what?
They were satisfied, we went over their concerns regarding the drainage, and this property is right behind our property, where the project is. They said that they are in favor of the current proposal for the project.
Okay, as far as the water drainage was concerned?
Correct.
Okay.
So another thing, since we were last in front of the board, we received a response from CHPO, they did request we do a 31, a archaeological survey, and we did have that done by, and she provided a report, and we provided the report and the letter to the board, the report shows that no further investigation is warranted, she did note that there is a non-culturally significant contamination from a 80-century farmhouse, tend to be on the plan, right up here, that's to, it's gonna be to remain, she goes us to the regulations to leave it off. So I know we submitted up the plan, so for you to discuss any drainage concerns or comments that you have.
Dan, okay, thank you.
Alright, so we've heard...
What was your name?
My name is Brittany Shailey with Keller C. We've heard your concerns about the drainage, we've heard the neighbors' concern about drainage and flooding coming on. So we've taken the plan and revised it since you've last seen it and added three infiltration basins, basically, so that it's going to capture water and just infiltrate into the ground. So basically, you're going to take the 15-inch pipe that you guys know is coming onto the property. There's about 131 acres coming on there that's passing through that 15-inch pipe and then just floods the area. So we're going to direct it into these basins and then eventually release it across the street. There's also another pipe on the right-hand side here. It's a 12-inch under the driveway culvert. There's about eight acres coming into that pipe down Martin Lake, down Martin Road. So we're going to collect that into a piping system and then put it into another infiltration basin here. And that's what's neighboring the fire department's property. And we're going to release, like, collect it again, infiltrate it into the ground before it goes on onto the property. So what we're trying to do is lessen the amount of water that's going to go onto their property, so we're going to reduce all the storm years that we're going to require. What I've also done, we've also heard concerns from neighboring properties further down. And this is, I think we've received photos from you guys of this property here in orange. So this is our property in red, the fire department's in green, and then orange is that, yep?
Yeah, just, I was curious, you know, it's impossible to do by eye. The property in orange, is that at a higher elevation than the Greenhaven Road? Intersection? I was curious whether there was a dip down from Semana Estate property as you travel as you travel west towards the Taconic. Does it, does it go lower in elevation than up?
Yep, so the intersection is kind of like a high point. So we're kind of at the same elevation, but there's a divide down in the middle of what Greenhaven is. So it kind of splits it. And then it all works its way down to the creek that's down here. And so that's where all the flooding concern is. They're having flooding issues behind their property and that's all coming from the creek that's the developer. Possibly getting developed, um, stream that's coming through and there's a culvert under the street there.
Now, the development, the circular development to the left, is that Sylvan Estates?
This one here?
Yeah.
That's part of Charbel, right?
Oh, Charbel, okay. That's Charbel.
The stream, the stream Brittany is mentioning comes on the backside of Charbel, actually.
Right.
There's the one, Brittany, if you go right up the line, Charbel, towards the back of the Doherty Park. So Doherty Park surrounds Charbel on the left-hand side there.
The green, I believe.
That's the green horseshoe.
Yeah, so there's a, there's a channel, a stream that comes down right behind, on the right-hand side of all those lots of Charbel. Yep, that's it.
In that valley.
And that starts up back behind, kind of close to Sylvan Lake Road. So that's all coming down and there's a county culvert that crosses Beekman Road right there.
So how, how does this affect the capacity of the Fishkill Creek? One of the members and I were talking before and...
How does our project affect it?
Yeah, well, I mean, how much capacity does the creek have? Now, that, Rob was bringing that up.
A lot.
Yeah, a lot.
Yeah, I mean...
It's a big sized creek.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Rob, you want to talk about that a little bit? Because I didn't really...
Well, I just, my concern at the last meeting was, are you increasing runoff post-construction?
So what we've designed that you see in the plan, no. But we've heard, I know Dan has forwarded us emails about, there's intersection work that's going to happen. So we're going to work with Dan's office and work with the county to try and figure out a solution to all of that. But the goal is to treat all of our property's stuff onsite, so we as a property are not increasing anything off of our site.
Right, yeah. So, and that's the, that's the main concept right now. There's a lot of moving parts here because there's a lot of what-ifs in a way. I mean, Charbel has been approved for a long time. They continue to be in contact with me periodically, saying, "We're ready to go almost, we're almost there." So, and I don't doubt them, that, you know, they had a number of other projects that they're working on concurrently right now that they are in construction with. But, so with regard to that, there's a lot going on in terms of that intersection. So the county has approved an intersection signalization in which they're going to actually add a right turn lane there as well. So it's going to all get wider out there. And my biggest concern is that in January of this year, I have photos from when I went out there and the water was up to the yellow line. So we have a safety hazard that results because of a poor drainage structure that goes across Greenhaven Road. I've made that clear to the county and my correspondence with them. They've had correspondence back with me where they recognize that as a safety issue, potentially. So, so they want to do their part to also help facilitate a fix here as well. So, you know, we're basically thinking that there's going to be some sort of a hybrid type of solution here where there could be an upsizing of the pipes. We still do some infiltration basins so that, you know, the amount of storm water that runs off as a result of new impervious development from this project itself is treated onsite. But still allows for the creek that used to run through here before county roads to continue to get where it was supposed to go. So, that's basically where we're at. We're, you know, we're looking to have some offline meetings with regard to, you know, kind of getting everybody on the same page because you have the DPW, you've got the Charbel folks, you've got these folks, you've got the town's interests. So there's a lot going on and they've done a great job of really trying to do their best to address what they can right now. You know, without having to fix the problems of other people, that other people have created in the past. They've been attempting to do that, though, so I appreciate their efforts on that. Just kind of trying to get this to a point where we can all have a little give, a little take, and everybody can be happy. But more important, most importantly for me is the safety of the traveling public on that road. It's not a town road. If it was a town road, I'd be demanding it. It's a county road, so I'm doing my best to demand it.
If you need my help, let me know.
Thank you, thank you. No, they were very receptive and we even had discussions as early as today, or as recently as today, I should say, where I think they sensed the urgency a little bit more on my part. You know, like I said, I provided them with pictures, photographic evidence that that's a problem. And, you know, one of my issues was, you know, if we eventually get to that point where they add that right turning lane and they're expanding that area out, there's actually storage of water right now that would actually be getting removed because they're adding lanes and they're adding fill in areas where there's water now at certain times of the year. And also, when you add a light, you're not approaching a stop sign knowing you're going to have to stop. And you see a green light and you say you want to catch it because you're running late to your meeting and somebody starts driving a little faster towards the intersection, doesn't realize that there's flooding in one of the lanes and they hydroplane and then we have a real problem.
Yeah, they could hydroplane.
To me, that's a huge issue that needs to be fixed. The eight-inch pipe that the county has there is a problem. It's way too small and it's way too high. So you, the water has to build up on this property just to even start spilling into that. And then when you have a real storm like we did in January, it was literally water crossing the road.
And it could have been frozen water.
Could have been.
On top of that. Yeah, it could have easily have frozen.
So there's a lot going on and we, you know, I think the applicant's representatives have been very sensitive to your concerns with drainage, which are very, you know, critical and important. So we're just trying to find the best balance that we can to, to not affect other people, to fix a problem, to not make it so that that property that these people own is not developable.
Right.
You know, to some rights that they have as property owners, so it's a...
That's great. I think the, if, I'm not going to comment on the county road and their drainage improvements. I don't think our board has any authority over what the county does with their road. That is...
Right.
If they do improvements and it affects downstream flooding or doesn't affect downstream, that's up to them. That's on, all I can control is what happens with the developments that are under our authority. And we've had past applicants in the past meeting where neighbors have come up and said to us, "The neighboring development is flooding my property." So it would be, for me, not to consider the downstream residents would, you know, that would be a bad thing for the planning department not to be. So my goal, my goal, the town code's goal and the state's stormwater regulations' goal is to make sure that when you, whoever bought this property, whatever conditions, when they bought it, were the conditions when they bought it. If there's a pond there, that's how they decided to buy. If there was wetlands here, that's how they decided to buy it. Everybody could think of it as that might be a problem for me that I have to fix, but the law says if, whatever runoff is there, is there. That's, you know, I don't feel like I have to constantly keep defending the law. But the bottom line is, is I'm just trying to enforce these important stormwater regulations that are there for a reason, that I happen to agree with. And so I appreciate that before, the plan before was to just funnel the water through and get it right to the pipe and then to make the pipe bigger and to get it out. And this is clearly a much better improvement because you're at least making some attempt to deal with your own water. And that's all I ask. That's all I would ask of anyone and that's what I would expect of myself on my own property. I'm not contributing to a problem to my neighbor's property. So, you know, that being said, the infiltration basin, is that a, I was looking at the detail, is that a New York State stormwater practice?
Yes, it is, yep.
Okay. Do, are the soils conducive to infiltration? Has someone looked at that?
Yep, so we did soil tests out there. We got, it's like sandy soil in the bottom. And we did infiltration rates as well and it wasn't even holding a five-gallon bucket, so it's got really, like underneath of all of the leaves and everything that are there that's built up over years, there's really good soil down there.
Oh, great.
So what we're doing is we're going to dig down even further. So we're going to dig out a little bit to get down to that good soil as well.
Okay, great. And to Dan's credit for the board and everyone else here, he contacted the county and they were unaware of the water breaching the road and crossing almost over from one side to the other. So they, if I can say that, they were receptive to addressing the problem and preventing, you know, hydroplaning and those sorts of problems by taking a hard look at at all the conduits and such related items. Any other comments from the board? Anything else for you to discuss with us at this point?
No, just thank you for your time.
Great. Sounds like a good, at least you have options. It's wonderful. Thank you for your time today. Appreciate it. Alright, the next item under discussion is Bailey Estates subdivision, Baker Road. Good evening. How are you today? Is this, so this is down from Ferris', where the triangular piece was?
Yeah, actually Ferris' is the next one. Baker Hill is the next one.
So this Baker Hill is the next one?
Yeah.
Here, as Ferris', so it's before it. And the valley is over here?
It's closer to, was it High Ridge Road?
High Ridge?
Is it High Ridge up there?
Am I, so this is Baker Road, so if I were right, and so is the valley over here?
Yeah, down, down.
Down that way?
Yep.
Alright. Hey, good evening.
Good evening.
Yeah.
So we're here for the pre-application and we had a huge booklet. We had, we were able to ask a bunch of questions. And then we had Dan review the sketch plan and we've got quite a bit of work to do, which is fine. But we've actually had, we have a new team now to get everything done. That's, that was a suggestion in letter, all in compliance with the code. The only thing that we had wanted to discuss was, Dan suggested we discuss it, are the regulation as to the trees. This is a very, very wooded area. It's a 17.1-acre vacant parcel, but it's all, almost all trees.
Right.
And we have here at pre-application stage, we had a nice discussion about, you know, keeping the aesthetics, keeping a certain amount of trees and, you know, kind of where they should be. So we're trying to look for some guidance as to that when we make the final sketch for the sketch approval.
Right. So we're concerned about view shed. You know, bucolic view shed is important, you know, in our comprehensive plan of our community, the character of our community.
Yes.
We're not, I'm not going to speak for the entire board because they'll each have their own opinion and comments, but scrub trees and that type of thing, in some areas is valuable, right? But generally speaking, in the areas of disturbance, you know, you're going to have to make some changes and improvements there.
Right.
The trees that are of vital importance are old growth trees.
Right.
Indigenous old growth trees, et cetera. So those are my comments. Any other board member?
No, I think that's well said and, you know, every effort should be made to save...
Preserve.
Yes, I mean, you can't replace growth that's taken how many years to...
No.
You know, and it's valuable and it actually increases the value of your property because I don't know anybody who doesn't love trees.
Right. Including us, yes.
Yes.
Sure.
But you're referring specifically now to indicating on the plans certain trees.
Correct, exactly right.
Which can be very costly, I understand.
Yes, yes.
And time-consuming.
We're actually more inclined on this part of the complete plan to leave as many of those trees as possible. And then if, you know, depending upon the homeowners at some point, they want to, they want to cut them down, do what they want to do with them, but for our plan, we would like to leave, you know, as many as possible.
So as from a construction standpoint, we just really just want to cut whatever is necessary to build, you know, without obstruction, but we really want to keep it as natural as possible. We don't really want to go in there and bulldoze and cut. No, that's not the idea. The idea is to get whatever is needed and, you know, leave everything else standing.
Right.
So in the areas of disturbance, is it... Rob, would you like, I'm thinking...
Well, I mean, I'll just, I think that's great, what you're saying. That's, yeah, cut down as minimal amount of trees as required to be able to construct it, you know? And that includes the house itself, the driveway, the system. You know, clearly you're going to need to, no pun intended, clear, to get those features in there. So, but they, I'll just add to the importance, it's not just aesthetic, but it's from a conservation standpoint, an ecological balance standpoint. The trees in the wooded areas, we've heard Bill speak on it many times at our board meetings. They're important ecosystems with lots of wildlife value. So the more trees we leave in there, the more we preserve the environment that existed prior to construction and try to do as least amount of disruptive damage to it as possible.
Right.
So I think you're headed in the right direction when you're saying we're just going, your goal, and I don't want to paraphrase... your goal, and I don't want to paraphrase you, but your goal is to do the limb, most limited amount of cutting as needed to get the.
That's correct.
Those features.
Right.
So to add to that, I'll, I'll say, when, when you do develop your plans, be very deliberate with showing tree protection and so that it'll help and assist our construction inspectors, our quote enforcement officers to enforce the plan. Uh, sometimes through no fault of the developer, your own, the builder may come in with his machines and be a little more sloppier and take out more than what's shown on the drawings. It was, so I'd like to see protection fencing and it's not expensive fencing. It's the orange fencing that, you know, delineate those areas that you're trying to protect. And then let's enforce that. Let's make sure that they, they don't go beyond that point. It may be a little bit harder for him to get around certain areas and to not disrupt, but that's the important thing is to, to protect those trees. If that's all of our goal, and it seems like that's what.
Because once they're gone, they're gone. That's it. They're replaceable.
Yeah.
I mean realistically though, we're not talking, I mean, you're going to still have to have some sort of curb appeal. So there's going to have to be some sort of house presentation and then depending on the grade and everything is going to dictate with the septic and everything as well. So.
Right.
You know, obviously it's got to be realistic and achievable as well.
Yep.
This more, as we said, it's more specifics certainly, but make it realistic. Cause again, if you come in there and say, here's a box and everything else is around it, that's, that's going to be nearly impossible.
Right. I mean, the other important thing about protecting the trees is the neighbor, and I always harp on this, the least impact to your neighbor. So a lot of times in these subdivisions, they clear right up to the edge of the property line. And then the neighbor who had trees on his side, those trees go into decline. And, and so if you can just, you know, pay, be sensitive to your neighbor's property lines that you're keeping buffers of trees on the side so that we're not, you know, creating a situation of tension between the new, the new incoming residents and the existing neighbors who've been there.
Right.
So specifically, what would you like to see on the plans as a board, the engineer as well?
Delineation of the trees that are going to remain and specifically like, again, some sort of like, uh, legend. So it's decipherable of what you're going to keep. It would be nice to know what your plan's going to be. Like what's the minimum diameter, your age? And again, just to reiterate what I said, again, I'm assuming, you know, you're doing this in the cell. So make it realistic. So if you plan on wanting to open up a little bit to present the house, which makes sense for curb appeal, just make sure that's being shown. So there's no surprises.
Okay.
So it says basically per thirty, 130 dash 12, trees 12 inches and greater shall be shown based on the expanse of the property and its current wild condition. There appear to be numerous trees on the site. It should be noted that town code requires trees of 12 inches and greater, uh, to be surveyed along with preliminary plat review.
Uh, eight inches and greater.
What did I say?
You said 12.
Sorry. Eight inches and greater to be, uh, ser- surveyed, survey located as part of preliminary plat review. Planning board should discuss the requirement with the applicant. Okay. So.
Right. And then there's discussion about a waiver. Uh, and I'm not sure what that actually means. So I'm.
Well, I think, yeah, that's what we're going to try to help you with. Cause what it, what it says is all eight inch trees, right?
Yeah, right. Right. And historically what the board has done is within the areas of disturbance, all the trees are eight inches and greater and within that have to be located.
Okay.
So the waiver technically is asking for trees eight inches and 12 inches and larger on areas outside of.
Outside.
Areas of disturbance to not be, have to be located.
So Rob's, Rob's point was to fence off areas that you're not going to disturb.
Right.
Right? Um, so I, I think, I don't want to speak for you. That's more of a detail that's sort of as you progress and get to that point where you've learned what the disturbance is. But as far as like, you know, your initial, what you're starting to do, which is survey, right? Like that's you gotta go out there and do survey.
Right.
Um, you know, I, be cognizant of those old story trees. You're, you're, you may, you may come in and show, all right, this is the best location in the house and here's the driveway and it's right on top of an old growth tree. And, but because you've decided that's where the house is going to go, we're going to exempt you from, you know.
Yeah.
Locating that tree. We got to be careful. We're not cutting our.
Right.
You know, preventing ourselves from, you know.
Yeah. Like a big beautiful sycamore, um, I'd move the driveway before I cut down the sycamore. You know what I mean?
Yes, yes.
Or cottonwood or an old oak or something like that.
Okay.
Cause that's going to add beauty to your.
Hundred percent.
Um, did I say that right?
Yeah. And it falls in line with a more efficient design too, right?
Yes. As we say, it's, it's right. You gotta have to go back and take a look and see and plan where you want it based upon the actual trees that are there and identify these trees and sit. Right. Yes. Okay. Understood.
Yeah. But locusts and, you know, they'll, they'll have value outside of the areas of disturbance, but I don't see any reason why you should have to identify.
Identify.
Any trees outside of the area of disturbance.
Gotcha. Understood.
Or, or as Rob would say, uh, the, the fenced area so that the excavators aren't, you know, taking things out that weren't intended to be destroyed.
Gotcha. Great.
Is that enough guidance?
Yes.
Yeah? Does that help? Does that help you, sir? Ma'am? Yeah? Okay.
Thank you very much.
It's not just about the trees though. There's, if there's steep slopes, are you going to be doing a sleep, steep slope analysis?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Cause there is sloping over.
There's lots of sloping.
Sloping on the park. Yes. So we have to do that. Yeah. And that was, we, Dan, I appreciated a very comprehensive letter, uh, the 50% plus sloping. And there is a bunch on the property. So we have to identify that where they are. Um, and unfortunately the, the first team that's here before me, uh, they had actually, it was a booklet and they actually had split up survey into, if you remember, into, uh, uh, different sections. There was one, just as to sloping. There was one just as to the lots and the plant. So we're going to, we're going to, yes, but it has to be merged altogether into one particular for the, for the sketch approval. So yeah, we're, we're.
I mean, between the, all the environmental features that our plan calls for.
Yes.
That's what helps guide the design. So you're looking at steep slopes. You're looking at the trees. You're looking at the.
Soil.
Soils, the, the stream, whether there's streams of water.
There is, there is.
Where there's wetlands, all of this, um, we have to see in order to make our decision on the impact of the project. And it should, the point is not to prevent you guys from developing. It's just to help us guide you in developing it in the most environmentally sensitive way.
Right. Right.
So each, each lot is how big? Yeah, that's what I thought. Yeah. Last time you indicated. That's a nice sized lot. Any other comments or questions? There's no actions or anything to take this evening, right? No?
Nope.
Any other advice from the board to these lovely people? No? Okay.
I mean, I guess.
Thank you very much.
There isn't one thing that one lot is undersized. So.
Not a lot eight. Yes. I saw that. Yes. That'll be a fix as well. Yes. Thank you.
They've got a nice cul-de-sac for the kids to play in.
Right.
Stick ball or something.
Yes.
Basketball court on the edge of that.
Oh, for sure. Yeah. All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it. In the circle, the one going this side, one going that side.
Take care.
Jump the curb. Yeah. Last one. Okay. All right. What's that? Did you, did you? All right. So, um, would you like me to read this now?
Yeah. Just want to let the board know.
Before you get up, I'm going to read it really slow.
I want to let the board know on Florida, um, John Greets, the, uh, motion that I gave him that I have a conflict of interest with this particular applicant. So I might be able to represent the board and recommending that you, um, I've reached out to Shane Egan from Capelino, uh, Capelino Rothschild and Egan out of Baltimore to cover this matter and its legal needs on behalf. And, uh, that's what John's going to leave to the record.
Okay. All right. This is on, uh, the Town of Beekman letterhead. Whereas the Town of Beekman Planning Board Attorney has been advised that he has a conflict in the Clove Meadows subdivision application, which necessitates the appointment of conflict counsel. The counsel, Shane Egan Esquire of the firm of Capelino Rothschild and Egan LLC has been consulted and has agreed to act as special counsel to the planning board. Now therefore be it resolved that Shane Egan Esquire be hereby is appointed and retained for the purpose of furnishing the planning board, its officers and agency such professional legal advice and services as may be required and shall receive compensation pursuant to its engagement letter for such services as warranted by the planning board to be paid by applicant pursuant to chapter 75 of the town code. Be it further resolved that the applicant is directed to consult with chapter 75 dash six for procedures and questions having to do with employment of special consultants.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
Okay. All second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Have a good night, Craig. Okay. Hi. How are you? I'm John.
Met the town.
Nice to meet you. Very nice to meet you.
So I'm here on behalf of HVT Homes LLC for the Clove Meadows subdivision. Um, it's in the R 45 zoning district. It's a 327 Heinz Road, it's a town road. Um, we're proposing a new town road, uh, come in cul-de-sac and then 13 single family homes. Um, there is a small portion of DC wetland over here. Um, there's federal wetland on the site which we have delineated and that's flagged on here. Couple of internet streams which are NRIM, natural resource inventory. They have a 50 foot buffer. So those are shown, 75 foot buffer from that federal wetland. Um, it's going to be all onsite sewer and water, private driveway, all the homes. Um, most of the lot is clear right now. There's not many forests, woods on it. There is some minimal clearing for some of the lots closed down. But mostly all good. Uh, slopes are very gentle. Um, there's only, the only part that's, I think 15%, I think is over in this area. But, um, it's pretty flat relative speaking. Um, we've done slope tests at the site and they are conducive to septic systems. There's going to be a full slip reply also. There's going to be over five acre disturbance. So that's going to be forthcoming. We've got a couple of conceptual locations for stormwater management practices proposed. Um, but obviously that's all up to the detailed design.
What's your distance from the existing, uh, wetland area? You, you indicated 75 feet.
Yeah, that's the buffer that's shown.
Uh huh.
Yeah.
That's from here to there. Yep.
And then, so this is the DVC wetland.
Right.
It's like that. It's just down here. And, uh, she did not include this connection. Um, Mike Wiki was out there. He's a biologist and he basically said it just looks like a ditch that's connected. I mean, it was completely dry when he was there.
Now, uh, January 1st, 100 foot buffer, right?
Yeah. So I need to talk to the DC to figure out.
Yeah. I, I was at a conference last week and, uh, they're not using maps anymore. Um, they're actually doing what they call desk approvals using geolocation and it's a hundred feet from any, any wetland. Um, so I'm thinking just to save yourself some issues and concerns, you might want to just take another look at the location of that one house.
Yeah. And, and so how would that affect?
And the other.
The stream, I guess, because that wasn't flagged as a wetland.
Yeah.
You know, the town.
They're not using the maps anymore. Uh, anything regardless of the size of the water course or the wet area or land, whatever it might be. Um, you know, they, they're going to be doing desk, um, they're going to make desk decisions based on your, your submission. And that will hold for five years. So. So what, what? I know. Right? It sounds crazy, but. So you're going to be subjected, because there's a DC wetland, is he then going to be subjected to? So the, the, from what I understand from this attorney, this law firm at, at the New York Planning Federation's conference, right? What they're doing is, uh, basically they're doing away with mapping, right? That, that you used to use as a resource and any stream, water course, uh, fjord or, uh, what was the other? Vernal? Vernal. Vernal Pond. Um, 100, 100 foot buffer is the new number. And they will, they will use, uh, you know, something like Google Earth to, to drill down and they'll make a desk determination. Um, and you, you could request a survey on appeal and 125 days from that decision to receive clarification. But the concern is the manpower to actually send people to the locations and do these onsite surveys and delineations on appeal. And that's going into effect January 1st, 2025. Um, and there's a lot of, uh, there's a lot of confusion about the specifics of this, but apparently they'll be rolling out those decisions. I just wanted to forewarn you.
Yeah. No, I, I, I mean, I was Dan's first time at this.
Yeah.
Which I agree with.
And you can take, you can take everything I just said with a grain of salt and get your own information about it. But it was a law firm at, you know, this conference that I attended.
Yeah. And interestingly enough, I mean, Sarah Plechek from the DVC delineated this, the, the state wetland portion of this now. So right now they're, they're dealing with the rules and regs that are in place right now. I, I think what he's just doing is just trying to make sure that, you know, letting you know that there could be an impact to your project based on that. If, you know, and I think it's all still, I don't know if anybody has a good handle on it yet. It sounds like this lawyer does.
No, I'm not a lawyer, but it's, uh, the only thing that protects you is you have to reach a certain point in this project phase where then we're advised to, uh, have a signed resolution to the effect of all of this information. Um, that delineates the, the wetlands and that sort of thing and buffers, uh, before, before, before we proceed. What was it? It was, um, um, yeah, they're going to, they're going to publish the rules, but.
They still haven't published?
No, no. Yeah.
So how are you supposed to enforce just if they're not even publishing?
Well, we're not going to be enforcing anything during this, uh, say implementation phase. All right. Um, the only enforcement that will take place is the DC, uh, during this, this, uh, say vague period of time between now and January 1st and thereafter. Right? Um, because of the reason that, you know, Dan said, uh, right now you're operating on existing, you know, regulations and laws. So it's kind of unfair to be in this situation.
It's all you can do.
It's all you can do.
It's all you really can do, really. The town is interested in.
What triggers the DHT response? Like when?
Water.
Previously, there was a, if you, if there was a wetland on DHT map, then you had to go to DHT.
Yep.
Right? And because if you're within a certain area of that well and your site is, then you have to go to DHT. What, in the new regs, did they say what triggers it?
Every wetland of every size in regulated and is regulated and a buffer of 100 feet. Now, I'm putting the word wetland in, it's wet area, from what I understand.
I mean, if you, if you have a five-foot by five-foot puddle.
Right.
If you're, if I'm hearing you right.
Yes.
And you put 100-foot buffer on each one, that's one acre.
Hmm, wow.
That's 200 by 200, which is basically an acre.
Well, I think.
I mean, that seems insane to me.
Yeah, and I wouldn't say that's, that isn't, that, I don't think that that's the intention of any of this.
Right.
And I don't think that we would require that, right? So it's giving the board latitude and.
No, I don't, like Bill was saying earlier, I don't want to prove anything that supersedes some DHT regulation.
Right.
I want to know if there is potential, my only question keeps getting back to what constitutes potential, right?
Yeah.
Before it was a very definitive flag.
Right.
There's DHT maps. That's what triggers it to go to DHT.
Oh, yeah.
I know as a board, there's no DHT wetland there. I can now just rely on the town's regulations and enforce them and I feel safe. Now, I want to know what that new trigger is and if you're telling me like the presence of water.
Let me, let me interject.
Yeah.
Because I want to, I want to put this in perspective. So this was an attorney at New York Planning Federation Conference. She uploaded the wrong files to her laptop, so she couldn't present her PowerPoint and it made it even more complicated. But she was very frustrated with having forgotten her, her correct files. But I gave you what I remember and heard and wrote down. So she was frustrated and upset because there's going to be a lot of litigation and you're going to have to do what you said and give them a call to get, to get some guidance. Now, there, like I said, what is going to happen is they're going to do desktop determination is what they call it. If it's negative, right, there's, then you're fine. If it's positive. Good night, Mr. Crane.
Good night.
Then you have 125 days to get a DHT representative down there to make a determination. And if, if it remains positive, that determination will remain for five years. That's what I remember and I think that's fairly accurate.
And thanks for clearly did your homework. That was good you went to the.
Clear as mud.
Thank you, but do not take anything as far as what I said verbatim.
But the fact that you're, the fact that you're over five acres.
I'm sorry.
The fact that you're going to have to do a stormwater plan.
I'm sorry, Congressman Gorito, no questions.
No, I do.
Attorney.
The fact that you're, just let me finish, please.
Go ahead, yeah.
The fact that you're going to have to go to D, submit Chris application, that will probably trigger a review by DHT.
Sure, right.
Yeah, definitely.
Right. You answered your own question. Yeah, that's exactly it.
All right, sorry, Fay.
No, no, no. I, forgive me, because I'm not familiar with this, but DHT regulations, how are they implemented? Is there, is there legislation involved? Is there any oversight?
Yeah, it's environmental conservation law.
So, I mean, who approves it? The legislature?
The state, yeah.
Okay, and this hasn't been approved?
My understanding was that there was new regulations that were going into effect in the beginning of the year, just as John's master.
I understand they've been approved. They're going into effect.
Okay, all right, okay.
But the guidance is ambiguous.
How do you approve something?
And I have heard some different things too.
It's kind of like the health insurance, you got to pass it to understand it.
Oh, that's terrible.
And you'll understand it eventually.
And when you get fined, you'll understand it.
Yeah, I mean, and I had heard different things too, and I haven't dug into them myself yet because, you know, frankly, you know, I don't know who has time for it.
In fairness to the applicant, I mean, not, not, not that it's anything to do with us, it's kind of unfair for him to be proposing a project in midstream, he'd have to redo it because the regulations have changed.
There is a defined, and I have to apologize, but I wasn't able to understand the defined moment where it's.
Your grandfathered.
Where your grandfathered versus the new.
Right, okay, all right, that's fair.
And, and the, and it's important for us to have an understanding of that, quite honestly.
I mean, I'm assuming when you speak to them tomorrow or whenever you speak to them, you're going to find out and communicate back what you found?
We'd love to hear what you have to say because you're right, you.
The more specific you have, the better.
Yeah.
Well, that's like Charbel hasn't been, hasn't been developed.
Right.
There's wetlands there.
Right.
Would they be affected by this?
Well, this was a big part of the conference. It was a very big part of the, and Rob's point is that it's, that's been signed and filed. Now, if they want to come back before us, because I remember a year or two ago, they were thinking about expanding.
Right.
All right? That would then, I believe, trigger.
But they can't retroactively go and change a subdivision because of changes?
No, for Charbel, they actually obtained their stormwater coverage.
Okay.
Which technically makes them subject to that plan that they had.
Right.
I think, it's a gray area, but if they had not obtained, let's say, that stormwater coverage.
Because that's 20 years ago.
And they may be subject to those new rules when they submit a new notice of intent to do the construction. So that was smart of them to have filed that and got, and gained that coverage at the time. It, it is a gray area though. There's a lot of legal interpretation that needs to be done and, you know, from some of the things I had heard, you know, a typical state wetland today is 12.4 acres, it's five hectares. And, and they were going to reduce that to seven and a half acres and that was going to be the state wetland threshold now. And that they were going to make, put the onus on the developers to have wetland scientists go out and delineate it and then survey locate it, calculate the area of it. If it qualified, then it became a state wetland, even if it wasn't on any older mapping, let's say. So they're not going to, they're not going to redo their mapping. Rob, to your point, what we do on every site is we would go to the DHT's environmental resource mapper and they have a wetland tech zone. So it's something within about 300 feet of their approximate mapped wetlands. And they say if you're there, you should consult with DHT to make sure that you do or do not have state wetlands on your site. So, you know, it sounds like it's all changing. We, you know, we're all going to be behind a little bit at first because everybody's busy. Nobody's really paying attention. I know a lot of people complained during the review process, the DHT, they put out a public notice for public comment. A lot of people complained. A lot of people also complained about the MS4 regulations. A lot of people complained about the new stormwater regs that are coming out.
And it means nothing.
DHT, you know, they're doing what they want to do.
Right. Well, you and I, before.
It goes to the record file.
When we were.
100%. That's your opinion, wonderful.
One, one point that more or less makes sense to me. Hopefully it's not onerous and it doesn't delay, right, which is a concern. That was one of the primary concerns of the law firm, you know, where are they going to get the staff to go out and, and it'll be easy from, from their desks to make determinations, but it's, it's, the issue is when there's an appeal and your project, you know, there's a lot of water on this project and you are under 100 feet in some cases here. So that's, that's why this is going to be important for you to investigate and come back and let us know what you uncover. But the, when Dan and I were in his office this afternoon, just looking at another project across the street where there's some elevations that go from, I don't know, 100 to 200, 300 feet, right? That 77-acre lot across the street. The maps were inaccurate. I mean, they showed streams going on the peaks of these elevations, of these, of these, not of hills, right? Rather than in the valleys of the hills. And clearly the streams were in the valleys of the hills. So the maps are wrong. And we've run into this before with other projects.
Unless it's magical streams.
Yeah, they're magical streams. So I guess these, these fellows, you know, maybe, maybe with their geolocation and Google Earth maps, will, will have better luck at making these decisions when these applications are filed with them. So there may be a positive, not a negative. I just wanted to throw a little sugar on this, so.
Yeah, but he can only do what he can, which is, you know, dealing with today's regs and moving on and, you know, it is important for him though because as we get, as we move forward, this, this project right now is just over the limit that qualifies as a type one action for SEER, which makes for a more rigorous environmental review of the project.
Yeah.
Because it's 13 acres, 13 lots on a property that's in an ag district, which means that in SEER law, and I put it in the letter just for your understanding, but 50 lots or more that are served by, on, by, that are not served by municipal water and sewer qualifies as a type one action automatically. There are other things that reduce that threshold to 25%, such as being archeologically sensitive or within an agricultural district and that. So, so in this particular case, this project is on a property that is in an established agricultural district, meaning that it brings that threshold from 50 down to 12.5. So they have 13, right now it's a type one. If the wetlands and buffers created some sort of an issue and all of a sudden this thing reduces down to 11, then it wouldn't be a type one anymore.
Right.
So it's, it's a, it's a gray area on how we're going to have to, we're just going to have to go with what today's laws are and do the best you can to adjust and be ready to pivot as you need.
And it was made abundantly clear, like for Charbel, okay? We're not going to enforce the new regs because we are not, as a town, in my opinion, interested in litigating with Charbel development over these new regs during these transitionary periods when, yeah, we're going from old to new. You're going to have to figure out when, in our process with you, the cutoff point is new versus old. What you need to get done by when, before the new regs, before you could potentially run into an enforcement issue with the DHT, not us, but the DHT, is my feeling.
For regs that aren't publicly available.
That's good. That's precious.
Can we magically wrap this up now?
Does that help? So I think, yeah, I would, Dan is saying go by today's regs. That, to me, today's.
Yeah, that's your best bet.
That's your best bet because today's regs will apply only if you can achieve a certain.
And then figure out where are you.
Right.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
Before it flips into the other new regs. I hope I didn't confuse you.
There is a virtual public hearing on October 10th, 2024.
There you go.
If anybody wants to attend.
I won't be attending that. You should, and then you can tell me what happens here.
I probably will.
Yeah, once it's off.
I like the fact that you're showing proposed landscape screening against the neighbors. Did you put that in there?
Yeah.
And I like your circle, that you have green space in the middle of the circle. That's good too, you know? Is Heinz Road a dirt road at that point or?
Yeah, is it?
No, it's paved. It's paved.
It's not, to a point, right? Like at some point it's dirt unless that is.
It does. No, that's due for, this is by, this is by the county road. This is paved.
Yeah.
Where's, where's Bulldog Hunkel?
voted down the road.
They're, they're over there, yeah, okay. And then this guy Clifford Schwark has some piece of property somewhere around here.
Yeah.
That guy.
That guy. Gosh, what a neighbor he's going to be. Yeah.
Don't worry about buffering that guy, all right?
You should put, you should put, you know, a red cross over by that area.
You should dump all your drainage into that property, all of it.
Yeah.
Throw it in there.
Yeah. One novo, four rest.
Yeah. Yeah, don't worry about any concerns along that edge.
That, that'll be your catch basin, your rain garden, yeah.
Guys, I got to go.
All right, go ahead, Jason. You have more questions for us, sir?
I was just wondering, I mentioned, I know, I was just suggesting.
If you need to go, Jason, you can.
Yeah, so, you know, the letter looks long. There's a lot of things that they actually provide, but I'm just asking for them to put the notation on the plans.
Okay.
So a lot of applicants don't provide us with anything. I don't suggest the sketch, but they've, they've got enough information on here that I, all of the components of sketch are shown within the supporting documents. I'm just asking them to kind of clean it up a little bit and move, and be able to move on, but it's, it just helps them get along in the process and they, they did a good job of.
They really did. I mean, and here I am, like, throwing this curve ball at you.
So we need to grant sketch approval?
You did a lot of great work.
If, if you feel you're ready for that, yeah.
It is appreciated.
No?
I want to see what DHT has to say.
Yeah.
Because that could have a big impact on the plan.
Yeah. Look forward to hearing from you next month about what you've uncovered because this is, we haven't had an application in this beginning stage so well designed with these, this amount of, you know, concern on it, yeah, wetland concern and new regs rolling around.
This is, this is the type of submittal I prefer to see in the initial part because they literally delineated the wetlands and I didn't have to tell them to do that and, you know, so there's, there's a lot of information that was provided.
What was that code again?
The maps and 155-52.
155-52. It's a joke.
And 155-53 is a steep slope.
Steep slopes, which you don't have to concern yourself.
I think that's the one corner you mentioned.
The shame of it is that you're right on this cusp of.
Yeah, right.
Of law change, yeah. DHT law change.
You know, he, I took, I had a chance to look at this this afternoon and he's, he's met all of his buffers on there.
Yeah.
On that map.
Yep.
Around the pond and with the intermittent stream.
Yep.
You've met all your.
All the current ones, he did.
Got the right buffers, so.
Yep.
I'm not sure of this regulation because that doesn't, the change in DHT regulation doesn't go to affect right until first year, I think.
Right.
All right, well, I don't want to be unfair. If you guys want to vote on the sketch approval, then that's fine.
I think, I think that, you know.
Would that be the thing that would?
You know, Dan.
Have to get hindered, so I said.
That would be.
If DHT comes back and just change and it just comes back and changes.
We still, so. Rob, that, that's a good point you just brought up, all right? And, hey Cliff?
Yeah.
You know, Rob just brought up a good point and, and for, for the applicant.
Yeah.
We may want to consider granting sketch approval at this phase. And I don't know about, you know, the SEER determination, that has to happen after the public hearing, so that we can't do anything about. But to move this application along and to possibly help him hit a trigger point.
Right, a grandfather situation.
Yeah.
Well, I, yeah, and also based on the fact that there's so much more detail on here.
Yes.
And that's what Dan was saying, that it meets the requirements of a sketch plan. So my only concern would be is if, if the DHT issue, if they come out and it makes a modification, it could have an impact on the proposed plan. But I don't think we're stuck with that if in the event that that happens. I'm prepared to go forward with.
So moving the project.
In theory, if you think about it, if you grant sketch approval on 13 and it ends up being 11.
Right.
Big deal.
Are you going to redo a sketch approval because it's less lots? No, I mean, if you, if you grant sketch on 13 and next thing you know it comes in with 17.
Right.
You're going to have to say, wait a second, that's not what we approved in sketch, we have to go backwards in the process. So, I mean, that's just my two cents on that.
So I'm comfortable granting sketch approval this evening?
Okay, so that's a motion. Robert, who's your idea?
Did you move a motion?
I did.
Oh, I'll second it.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay.
So maybe that?
Yeah.
That may be a grandfather.
Little bit of help there.
Yeah, all right, there you go.
Signing is everything, at least you know about it, right?
You know, he's up against his deadline.
Yeah, no, that was...
So I'd like to take the luxury to wait a little longer.
I think it's...
If he's unfairly advocating in this instance.
And he did a lot of due diligence here that we don't normally see, so...
Are we good?
We're good.
I think we're good. This was actually shortening. He should have been at the last one, right? He would have had a heart.
Who's he? He contributed more to it for the last three years.
Um, can I...
I'll make a motion, New Jersey.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
What did you take home?